Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our council workshop for Monday, November 7th. This morning, our first item is going to be the responses to the previous council workshop questions. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Councilmember. You had several questions related to the NDC presentation. The first question had to do with the impact on assessed values, taxable values of the NDC projects that have occurred. They did some analysis for us, and over the last 10 years, they worked on properties that had an initial valuation of about one and a half million dollars and that today have a value of about 4.7 million dollars, so about a three million dollar increase, which is nice. And if you try to apply that to see how it impacts over a 15-year period, the gross increase in taxes from all of those properties would be about 3.8. But if you look at just the increased values that occurs from these investments, it would be about two million dollars over that 15-year period. So they're certainly on the positive side of ledger there. Next question, can the amount of city funds that equate to percent of total revenues be explained? NDC has received about $900,000 per year for the past 10 years. With those funds, they have leveraged about 18 million dollars in development as of today. They estimate that number to be 22 million by the end of 2012. And they also point out that they've helped about 19 businesses start up and create about 100 jobs through those different development projects. Next question was, there's some issue with the EZ, that's Enterprise Zone Boundary, for the latest projects. Could staff review existing boundary and extend to qualify this project for EZ credits? We are looking at census block data. The state law prescribes, I think, census block lines as the basis for drawing the Enterprise Zone Boundary. So we are looking at that to see if there's a way we can do exactly what you've asked us to do there. We'll report back to you on that. Then on the budget, you ask us to clarify the savings under our self-insured versus our older insured program through Wellmark. So if you look at the Wellmark plan that we had before, the city could have expected about 8% annual increases for FY 2013 and another 8% increase for 2014. If you apply that to the amount of insurance premiums, it's around $2 million dollars per year for those two-year periods. Under the self-insured program, we don't expect any increase in cost for FY 2013 and about a 6% increase for 2014. So over the two-year period, over the two-year budget that we're working on now, that's about a 10% reduction in insurance premiums, a very, a very good number. Then you ask, what is the residential rollback? The current rollback is 48.53%. That is, residential property is taxed. You take 48.5% of the value of assessed residential property, and that gives you the taxable value. So it is less than half of the value of a house is actually taxable. However, as we look to the future, based on the numbers we're getting from the state, that rollback number will increase to about 50.5% in FY 2013 and about 52.5% in 2014. We've also attached a summary of the rollback numbers to this report. And the last question was, could capital crossroads be incorporated into the guiding principles for the budget adoption? Our thought is that yes, the, all of the capital crossroad objectives would be reviewed, and we would incorporate those into the budget to the extent that their goals and objectives are consistent with the mission and goals that you established for us. So to that extent, we would, we would be looking at that as well. Mayor and Council, that concludes the questions and answers, and I'd be happy to answer any additional questions you might have.
Anybody have anything? Seeing none at the moment, let's move on to CDBG.
Good morning. Today's presentation will cover the 2012 Action Plan. These are recommendations for CDBG home and ESG funding. The 2012 Action Plan will begin, as for the period, beginning January 1st, 2012 through December 31st. The guiding principles for the 2010-2012 CDBG allocations have been to be consistent with the core missions of the city. Fiscal reality, to be sensitive to the city operations. And continued funding for the neighborhood revitalization efforts. These guiding principles we have used for the last three years on developing the recommendations for the CDBG funding. CDBG funding for neighborhood revitalization, starting back in December 2009, City Council approved the policy for the discontinuation of nonprofit funding through the CDBG program. It was a phasing out process, if we remember, that was to continue over a three-year period. The 2012 Action Plan will be the final year that nonprofits do receive funding from the The 2012 Action Plan, just to go through the timeframe that the city staff and the NRB did utilize in coming up with the funding recommendations, in June, earlier this year, city staff did send out requests for work programs for various city departments and did request applications for funding from area service providers for the ESG program. August 23rd through the 25th, the NRB did receive presentations from city departments and service providers on their current programs and how they use, on how they plan to utilize the funding. August 27th, the NRB discussed, did discuss their funding recommendations during a meeting that they did hold at the Botanical Center. September 7th, they did adopt the funding recommendations, with those being transmitted to the City Council to set the date of public hearing, which was done on September 12th. Just to look at the past history of our funding recommendations, and as you can tell from the chart, just looking at the last eight years of funding, there has been a decrease of funding for CDBG and home, most notably looking at CDBG back eight years ago. We have had a decrease of funding of about $1.2 million. Home has been around $270,000. There's been a slight increase in ESG. Pretty much that has basically held steady over that time period. For 2012, we do estimate what the funding is going to be, the way our allocation process starts, probably around the, it was around August of this summer. We did look at what was going on at the national level with our funding as we do begin our allocation discussions. CDBG, at that time, we were estimating around a 12% reduction from the 2011 level. For home, it was around a 12% reduction as well. There was going to be an increase in ESG. So those numbers were used on allocating the funds to the different agencies and the different proposals that we did receive. Currently, CDBG, there has been discussions of a reduction around 16% for CDBG, and for home, it's a lot more dramatic, more around a 38% is currently being discussed at the
You might point out that it's worse than that. They're discussing reducing both of those to zero.
City manager's recommendations for the 2012 funding. CDBG funding needs to be utilized to continue vital city programs in our neighborhoods. With that, the, there's a recommendation to increase the demolition program by 37,000. The program in the past is funded slightly around 100,000, so that'd get it up close to 100, 140 roughly.
And how many properties would we be able to demolish with that increase?
It's right around six, five or six, maybe a little bit more, depending upon what the bids are. Not dramatically a lot. The Neighborhood Based Service Delivery Program, there's two programs funded through the Office of Economic Development, and scrub program are being recommended to be funded at the 2011 levels.
Can we go back to the demolition? Because I get a lot of, there's a lot of discussion in the community on that and the impact on neighborhoods. Have we had discussions with other funding, i.e., Polk County Housing Trust Fund, that they could use some of their funds for demolition?
We've never, I know, sought funds from the Polk County Housing Trust Fund before. Not sure if that's a, something that they would fund that activity yet. I know one thing we have used through the Community Development Department, through some of the other CDBG funding that has been allocated for neighborhood revitalization activities, to do some acquisition rehab through that process. Additionally, with the recommendations for 2012 funding, there are two pretty dramatic reductions that we are looking at. One is from the site offices, reduce funding for that by $50,000. And the other is NCS, the Housing Opportunities Funding, reduced by a little over 450,000. The second program is for more specifically, the Emergency Repair Loan Program, where there is assistance that do go to help repair the major systems of owner-occupied, low-income owner-occupied housing. This is a program usually fixes probably about 80, 90 single-family units throughout the year. This program does rely on other funding streams as well. So one thing I know that we are currently looking at is still try to reach the same number of individuals, we're going to have to dramatically reduce the type of improvements that we do do in the housing as a part of that.
Chris, could you just mention, what is the balance of the funding that is available for cutting 461? What would be left in the program?
The remaining funding will be about $630,000 available for that program.
Per year?
Yep, per year.
This is a program, as you all know, that, that does confer a lot of benefit on low and moderate income people in the community, particularly seniors or low-income folks that own their home. And you go in and you, you do major repairs. It's not really a program that, that does a lot with exteriors, if I understand.
Right.
But it does keep the housing occupiable for a lot of people in our community. It's been a program, I think, we've had for 30 years.
Yeah.
It's been a long time. This is a pretty, pretty significant cut, and one of the things, and Chris touched on it, is that we, we are starting to think about a little bit, is looking for some other revenue streams. And we've never really crossed the line of looking for private donations or private contributions to these sorts of programs, but we're sort of running out of options. So it might be something, Mayor and Council, that I'd appreciate some guidance from you as to whether or not it's something you want to pursue, but it is an important program that, that helps a lot of people.
Well, and particularly when you look at the increase in the number of families that meet the low mod guidelines, a couple of thoughts. The franchise fee, how much do we allocate in the franchise fee to go to help offset? I mean, that would be one thing to look at. And then also looking at, if we're looking at an alternative revenue, I know we have other items that we're looking at for alternative revenue, but not to lose sight of this.
Right. I, my thought was to identify new revenue streams that are external from the city right now. Our revenue streams are also taxed, literally and figuratively, including the franchise fee. And so we were trying to think if there was other sources outside of our normal ones that we could start tapping into. And it just, it's just an important program. And I, I, we very much regret that cut, but you know, these dollars are going down, so something has to happen.
Are there any questions? Chris, thank you.
Did you have more to do?
Just, the, these recommendations will be on the agenda for tonight for a public hearing.
Set the date of hearing?
Tonight will be the public hearing.
You set the hearing?
It was set on September 12th, I believe. That's it.
All right, we're going to get now a budget update.
Okay. Good morning, Mayor, Council. Scott Sanders, Finance Director. I've got a budget update for you that includes two topics, a review of the Town Hall forums and a calendar of events dealing with the budget moving forward. The Town Hall forums were very well attended, had nearly 300 residents come to the three events that we held over at the Botanical Center. I've got a map, if we could show that. The IT department was good about putting a map together for us that shows where the attendees came from throughout the city. And you'll see the density in the west and northwest, but the, the city was well represented throughout when they, those that were willing to put down their addresses. So we were pleased with that. The venue, there was admittedly, with staff, concern of the size, if we would be able to hold, not knowing how many attendees would come. And sure enough, on the second event with Public Enrichment, we did utilize that facility completely. Probably had capacity for another 10 or 15. So we will need to think about that in the future, the venue that we use. But having said that, it was definitely comfortable, and we think it was arranged properly, so we were, we were happy with that. As far as the process itself, we did have a comment sheet that we asked people to fill out at the very end of the event, and it included one question, and that was, was the forum informative? And they were asked whether it was very informative, somewhat, or not at all. The response was 65% that it was very informative and 35% that it was informative somewhat. Zero respondents said that it was not, so that was also encouraging. The citizens were very participatory. I think everyone had a chance to, to stop by and see some of that activity. The table format allowed for neighbors to speak to each other, and quite honestly, with the differences of opinions, there was a lot of recognition of how difficult choosing priorities can be, even when they have all the details in front of them about the services and the cost for those services. So if there was one common comment that was brought up very frequently, both in writing and in conversations, it was the acknowledgement of the difficulty and those tasks that the City Council and Mayor have in front of you now with the budget planning. The information was flowing in both directions, from the citizens to the department heads as well. I had no less than four different department heads approach me afterwards to let me know that the input they got from the public would definitely shape the cuts that they submitted to the city manager for the next couple of weeks. And so that was encouraging as well. The primary purpose was to give the public information about our budget so that they could prioritize. But we knew, if, if it went well, the departments would also come away with ideas on where to maybe leave alone and where there was an opportunity for cuts. And that did occur. The city goals exercise was the first exercise the public went through. And if there were one critical comment that did come out, the citizens were asking that that goal exercise get updated, maybe some refinement, and maybe even expressed differently in the exercise. So we took that to heart, and we'll definitely make that change moving forward. The second exercise involved the departments and the matrices, where they were allowed to kind of rank those as well. Again, very good, useful information out of that, and that was shared with the departments. No surprise that, actually, this deals with the city goals exercise, the public safety aspect did come in ranked highest. There was some pushback, however, from the citizens, that we kind of set up the whole discussion focused on expenditures. And so what we saw in the comment sheets was requests for looking at revenue enhancements. We didn't necessarily think as staff that that was the right venue to, to discuss too much about revenue enhancements, but it clearly came out in the comments that were made in, in the comment sheets. So with that, I think that, that kind of summarizes the three events that we had with the public. I can take questions now, if you'd like, before I move on to the calendar, or anybody have anything?
I was pleased, I was just really pleased with the turnout and the level of participation, mostly at the tables that I sat at. I thought it was great.
Yes, very, very active conversations. So for the budget planning, we've just really begun. We've got some public input. The meetings have already been held with the public, and we started out on September 26th with a brief discussion of where we thought the, the budget gap was. Moving forward, we will start to have more weekly workshop updates, because there's a lot of topics that we do need to cover within the full budget. Starting next council meeting, or the workshop prior to the council meeting, with a review of how we finished up last year, the fiscal year 11 performance. Then we'll move on to an updated funding gap. And that's kind of a critical one as well on November 28th. This is where we will have much better information as to both revenues and expenditures. And so the $7.7 million funding gap, I can tell you right now, will change. Unfortunately, we're still waiting on some very big factors to come in over the next five to 10 days. So on November 28th, we'll bring the drum roll in and let you know what that new gap is. But I, I feel encouraged that it will be lower than 7.7, but I can't really elaborate too much beyond that until we, until we have pension, we'll have pension contribution rates, and we'll have final rollbacks, which actually just came a couple of days ago, and TIF requests, which will also be on the agenda for November 21st. Those main factors will, will affect the budget gap significantly. And then we'll move on through December and January, making sure we touch upon all the different aspects of the budget, both the capital and the operating funds, as well as the enterprise funds with the sewer utility and, and garbage collection and things of that nature. Everything will lead us down to February 27th, which will be, at this point, and this is still a tentative schedule, obviously, the council meeting where you would have the public hearing and the adoption of the budget for fiscal year 13. So that's kind of how the schedule looks to shake out at this point.
Scott?
Yes?
In looking at the schedule, one observation would be, and I know we've talked about this at previous council meetings, was having the opportunity for public input again, and you've got it scheduled for the 20th or the 21st. My only concern about that is, it's really the week of Christmas. It's right, I think the last two weeks in December make it very difficult to have public meetings of any type. If we could move that back to maybe the Thursday?
The week before.
The week before.
I think we can look at that, because the schedule, another critical date there is December 5th. And that's really the opportunity for the elected officials to see what the city manager's been able to put together as the budget. And so we wanted to make sure there was enough time there between that and the public to, to start absorbing that. So I'll leave, Rick, if...
No, I agree with Scott. We'd be happy to look at moving that date up from the 19th to an earlier time. Scott is right, the December 5 date is critical. Another term that we sometimes use is budget strategy. So hopefully by December 5th or around that date, we'll be coming to grips with, with where you want to go and what kind of a budget you want to see and what cuts or adjustments need to be made. So for me, that's a, that's a big date. And before we start scheduling or actually having additional council or public forums on that matter, I'd want to make sure that you were comfortable with that. So we'll take a look at moving that December 20 or 21st date, just a week, a week forward, if we possibly can. It may mean that we'll be at your doorstep a little bit before December 5th, if we can, to get your input, so.
Can, can I ask a question about the, the process between today and December 5th? And I don't know if it goes to you, Rick, or you, Scott, but I know that the manager's office, the budget committee, has asked each department director to submit kind of a range of ways of dealing with our, our forecasted budget gap. And those come back to you, I don't, you know, I don't think that's, you know, we're not going to be able to sift through those and see what's a reality. But is it between now and December 5th that you're going to sort through those and, and identify?
Yes.
The things?
Yes, yes. Yeah, from today through December 5th is the critical time, at least for, for me, in trying to go through all the departmental things and to come to grips with what a plan is. And clearly, I'm going to have to have some, some input from all of you. So as we go through that and start to get questions, I'll be bouncing ideas off of you and getting your thoughts, so that, so that when we get to that December 5 date, or if we have to modify it a little bit, we'll hopefully have a plan that makes sense to you that we can lay out.
Which is completely budget, or balanced.
Mm-hmm. You know, the, the other question I have between now and, between now and December, and then again on February 27th, is what kind of data will the council get through the manager's office and budget committee related to health care? I know we're still in kind of the infancy of the self-insured model, and at some point, I know in the questions answered earlier in the, in the workshop today, we forecasted a 0% increase in that. But, but changing that by a point or two either way?
Right.
Really dis, I mean, that, other than salaries, our largest expenditure as a city, so.
Chris, two, two comments. On the November 28 workshop, we're going to, we're going to have additional information on what the funding gap amounts are. That'll look at health costs and pension costs. Scott went through that a moment ago. So we'll have sort of refined estimates on what we think our cost will be. Health insurance is always one of the last things to come in. The second thing I'd say to you is that when, when the council made the decision to go self-insured, you asked us to produce for you, I think it was monthly reports, in terms of what our payouts look like. We're doing that, so hopefully by the time we get to that date, you'll have a little bit more information. But I think, I think the question you're asking, at least in part, is, how are we actually doing? Are our payouts consistent with our underlying assumptions on the self-insured approach? So to the extent we've got data, and of course, we're not all the way through the current year, not even close, but whatever data we have, we will be able to share with you. But, but we are looking at that in some detail, and on the 28th workshop, we'll be able to lay that out for you as best we can.
My, I appreciate that. I think my underlying worry or concern is that while on one hand, we want a budget blueprint, so we get lots of input in it, and we have it out there for discussion for a long time, the other side of it is, between contracts with our employee groups, health care, legislative impact, a lot of the things that will, you know, if I were to list the most important things that are going to affect the budget, we won't know on December 5th. We probably won't know on January 1st, but we have to approve a budget on February 27th that adequately forecasts what those might be.
Right. Right. You're absolutely right. And all budgets are really plans and their projections are predicated on a whole series of assumptions. You've identified some of the, some of the more critical assumptions to us. We do our best. I must say, with the leadership of Alan and Scott and their team, they've done a pretty good job of estimating those costs in past years. But you're right, those, there's always a little bit of a, of a gamble there when you try to project it. I will also say that our operating principle on projections is to be conservative, both on revenues and expenses, so that we build some cushion in to make sure that we don't, we don't cut a short. And we also, as you might recall, include some contingency funds in our operating budget, which is a relatively new practice for the city. We've done that for the last three or four years. It serves us very well, by the way. We've almost never spent all of the contingency, but we've had to, we've had to dip into it from time to time and it's been very helpful. So your, your points are well taken. We do our very best to do those projections and we'll try to update as much of that as we can for you on the, on the 28th.
I picture very much on February 20th or 27th, a whole group of people coming in and saying, you know, now at the 11th hour, you're making adjustments to the budget you said was going to be your budget in December. And I guess it's important for me to say, and probably all of us, this is going to be very fluid until we vote on it, I think.
Right. It, it will be and it's the nature of the beast. But, but the one thing, and I think sometimes I feel a little bit like we're, there's, there's, people think there's some attempt to manipulate numbers and hide things. That's not it at all. We, we want to be as open and transparent as we can, but those numbers simply change a lot and we don't have good data. Scott just mentioned a couple of the variables about taxes. Projecting tax revenues is only as so good as the data we have and we don't have good data, or the data gets better as we go along, so.
Let me throw in another piece, and I absolutely agree. I think it's going to be very fluid. And that's why I, quite frankly, as one council member, have some hesitancy in having a open public forum and discussion with the public when we haven't discussed the operating fund balance, we haven't discussed CIP or debt service, we haven't discussed enterprise funds, and we haven't discussed the special revenue funds. Maybe it'd be better to move it to some slightly later timeframe after the 9th of January. I think it would be a little disingenuous to do it on December 5th because we have not really even gone over a lot of the, the variables in our, in our budget itself, so.
Are you talking about the one that's now planned for the 20th or the 21st that we talked about moving up?
Instead of moving it up, move it back maybe.
Mm-hmm. The idea with the 20th or 21st is the only topic, the broader topic that hasn't been addressed is the special revenue funds.
Exactly.
And I would maybe suggest that we try to move that up rather than the public forum backwards.
Does it squeeze you on the other end if you have the public forum too later?
Right. And if there are adjustments necessary based on that, and then the timeframe becomes very tight. You know, the special revenue funds, there's a reason why those were handled last. They're the least observed by the public a lot of times. So I would suggest we try and move the special revenue funds possibly up into the schedule.
Scott, talk a little bit about sort of production time because the, the production time of actually preparing the budget document is fairly significant. And we're, we're trying to get the budget document released by the end of January so that you've got a little bit of time to look at that detailed document. In the past, you've always wanted some time to look through the detail. Now, when we, we're talking about the, the proposed balanced budget strategy, if you will, that's, that's not the whole document. That's the, those are the key policy decisions that are embedded in the document. But you need some time to actually produce the, the budget document. So I think part of the philosophy, Mr. Mayor, was to make sure that there's enough time to put that document together. And I think that's part of the reason you're saying the 20th or the 21st for the other.
Well, I understand. All I'm saying is I just think that, that we're not going to have enough of those variables and that, that fluctuation till you get closer to the date. And I just, I, I'm somewhat skeptical of having a, a honest, open discussion with the public when we really haven't even discussed a great deal of this budget. And go back to them and say, we've got a balanced budget. I mean, you could say that today, Mr. Manager, and go, we could skip all the rest of it and go back out. Thought we were going to be a little closer to the solution.
Yeah.
It's a balance.
It's, it's, it's a balance. You know, and maybe, maybe what it boils down to is that you've really got a couple key junctures in the process. Maybe, maybe to be really transparent and open to the public about it, maybe you have a couple of times when you're talking about the balanced budget strategy, maybe you do one after you've done the special revenue fund presentation so that you've got all the, all the data in front of you and we make, we make the best judgment we can. And then you say that's not the final thing and you give a little bit more time for numbers to, to firm up and you come back later. It's, it's important to us to begin talking about what the strategies are sooner rather than later because if you, if you wait to the very end of the process, then you really get up against a wall because you've got this month or so it takes to actually produce the document. But I, I understand your point. And why don't we just kind of work on that as we go along and we'll see if we can come up with a solution that's comfortable for you.
And Mayor, well, I'll look at a schedule where we get all topics covered before the public forum. But that special revenue fund, just so you know, the largest piece of that special revenue fund are like the taxes for our health and taxes for our pension funds. And those are going to have to be resolved and discussed on December 5th as part of our operating. Because those special revenue funds, a lot of times are simply transferred into the general fund to be expended. So again, by that December 20th, even as it lays out there, 95, if not 98% of the budget has been discussed in some shape or form in a relation. So to me, it's a matter of just pushing the rest of the, the topic in front of the public, public forum.
Right.
So if, if we move the date forward, the enterprise funds and CIP would, or at least the enterprise funds would need to be advanced as well.
We'll look at the schedules.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and talk about tree service licensing.
Mr. Mayor, while Diane is getting this queued up for you, two things here that I wanted to mention to you. One is that you're going to hear the presentation this morning from David Yon, who's our new municipal arborist. We're very pleased to have David here. He's already been an asset and a plus to all of our operations and all of our departments and appreciate his, his good work and his expertise. The other thing I wanted to mention to you, on the subject of tree contractor licensing, is that this in a lot of respects is, is a new program for the city. We haven't had a licensing program for tree contractors. There's clearly merit in having such a program, but there's also just as clearly some costs that would be imposed upon the city, either in the way of additional fees or charges that we would make, impact on staff workload. And for all those reasons, I would suggest to you that now's probably not the best time for us to embark on a tree licensing program, tree contractor licensing program. And that, while I think the presentation you're going to hear from David is really well done and thorough, it might be that we would want to wait a while to get through the budget and see how the implications of the budget and all those cuts or adjustments sink in before we actually embark on adopting this sort of a program. Because of the fact that it does, it does impose some cost issues on us and some workload issues on the city organization and when we're making all the cuts that we're talking about, or whatever adjustments we're talking about, it just seems like it's a very difficult, awkward moment to roll out a new program. Nonetheless, I think the work that David has done is, is great. He's worked with a lot of folks and citizens in putting it together. I think he'll find it very interesting and certainly something that maybe could be considered in the future. So with that, David.
My name is David Yon. I'm the municipal arborist for the city of Des Moines. Good morning, Mayor, County, and council members, and City Manager, Clark. I would also like to extend a hearty good morning and welcome to members of the following groups, the Citizens Licensing Committee, neighborhood organizations, tree contractors, Mid-American Energy, and Trees Forever. It was suggested to me early on, the presentation preparation, that I ought to introduce myself because I'm brand new to the city. So I'm going to take a few slides to do just that. I'm an associate of the Ontario Agricultural College, University of Guelph in Ontario, Canada, where I studied nursery and landscape horticulture. I'm a registered consulting arborist, American Society of Consulting Arborists. I am a certified arborist with the International Society of Arboretum Culture. I'm both a certified arborist and a municipal specialist with that organization. I retain membership in the international group. I also hold chapter memberships in Florida, Pennsylvania, Delaware, and now in the Midwest, which includes Iowa. And most recently, I've become a certified tree risk assessor with the International Society of Arboretum Culture. Previous experience included 15 years in southwest Florida, where I was in charge of general landscapes, only part of which include the specific tree care. In this particular photo, I'm explaining the finer points of tree pruning to both municipal and county workers. And I arrived in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, six years ago and was a city forester there in charge of the forestry group. And that big fat check I'm holding, $2.4 million, was written by the Street Trees of Pittsburgh to the residents of the city on behalf of the environmental and aesthetic benefits that trees provide. And we daily receive the same benefits through less energy consumption when you have more trees, carbon dioxide reduction, better air quality, stormwater handling, and aesthetic and other benefits. And so I assure you that we are being written a check every day and we'll have our own photo op as soon as I can pull one together. And also my work in Pittsburgh involved instructing citizen volunteers. And that's something we're looking forward to now in the city of Des Moines as we partner with Trees Forever to train citizen volunteers to look after young trees. So I'm going to transition now to today's topic and tell you that within the next year, I'm hoping to craft an urban forest master plan. And the components of that would be a tree inventory, which would quantify what we've got and what condition it's in. From that, we will craft the management plan about how to look after the most critical items first until we can fully optimize the benefits of our urban forest. Tree preservation and tree planting, countering threats like disease and insects, and then ordinances. A good urban forest master plan has a robust set of ordinances protecting and promulgating trees. So our topic for today is city licensing of tree contractors. It's a citizen-driven initiative to guard the urban forest by elevating the proficiency of tree contractors. February passed, a citizens committee requested of council that a tree contractor license be written. City council referred the issue to the city manager to work with the new municipal arborist. And since then, I've met twice with the citizens committee and three times with representatives of multiple city departments. And today's workshop is intended to educate the council about licensing and to invite your direction. So what would the purpose of such an ordinance be? First and foremost, to reduce premature urban tree losses due to the abuse of trees. There's also a public welfare component whereby an ordinance would protect consumers by requiring liability insurance and workers' comp, and also by ensuring a baseline of tree knowledge by contractors. Tree abuse happens in several ways. The first and most egregious is topping. Topping leads to branch and trunk decay. Topping starves trees. It makes regrowth hazardous. At all those points where the tree was cut, there's no logical place for regrowth to take place. And when it does take place there, it's not as firmly attached as it would be as, as if it were a regular branch on a, on a main stem of a tree. So it makes it more hazardous. And topping disfigures trees. This flyer was delivered to the Waterbury neighborhood just this past October. And in the middle of the document, they say proper pruning, but I've put a red circle around the fact that they advertise topping as part of their service. The consumer needs to know that topping is bad for the tree. And tree contractors need to stop promoting this harmful practice. I've got a couple more examples of tree abuse. One is flush cuts, the other stub cuts, and you have these on your handouts. I do want to touch base on a disease cycle. In this case, the oak wilt disease. And that little critter in the top left, he spreads the disease to healthy oaks, the tree dies, and that cycle continues to go around. But then the bottom cycle shows that trees of the same species, if they have grafting in the root zone, the disease also spreads there.
David, could you explain how licensing of tree services would help stop this cycle?
Well, we're going to get there in terms of educating the tree contractors. Let me, let me flesh that out as we get there. Thank you. So pruning and removal at the wrong time of year can spread the disease, and so can failure to properly handle or dispose of tree parts. I wanted to bring this example to bear. Emerald ash borer, you will be hearing about this a lot in the next two to five years. The genesis of this insect, well, it was really in Asia, but it arrived in America at Windsor, Detroit area in 2002. Since then, it had spread to my previous home territory of Pittsburgh and farther east. And now it's been found in the northeast corner of Iowa. It has taken tens of millions of ash trees and decimated them. And until recently, we had no chemical control. So here again, if an unwitting contractor prunes trees during the adult emerald ash borer flight season, you spread the problem. If they fail, fail to properly dispose of harvested branches or wood, that spreads the problem. And then if they fail to understand that we now have some new control method, they're going to lose more trees. So the goal of the tree contractor license then is to reduce or prevent tree abuse and thereby extend the life of our urban forest. Progressive benefits would include being able, and this answers Mr. Moore's question to some degree, by having the ordinance in place, now we can have an immediate communication linkage between the city of Des Moines and the tree contractors who are licensed. We in turn can relay educational updates and pest alerts from the U.S. Forest Service, the Iowa DNR, and the city of Des Moines, and thereby reduce the spread of disease and How will it protect citizens? We'll have insurances and workman's comp mandatory. More educated, informed work will be accomplished, and they'll have to have continuing education units to keep up to date in their field. And dishonest contractors will be held in check by ISA Arborist Certification Code of Ethics. So we did a little bit of a search to find out who else had an ordinance. And in Iowa, we touched base with Davenport, Waterloo, Marshalltown, Cedar Rapids. Regionally, we touched base with Omaha, St. Paul, and Minneapolis. And we also touched base with Denver, Colorado. We found these four common themes in their ordinances. And I'm going to take the next four slides to flesh those out just a little bit so you understand what it was we found. No one of those shapes our opinion about what we ought to do, but it gave us some background with which to work. So first fees, I'm comparing low to high, 50 on the low end and 220 annually on the high end. If they were required to have insurance, the low end asks for 10,000 personal injury, 5,000 property damage, up through 300 and 100. In some situations, workers' comp was not mandatory. If it was, they would bear the cost of that. In some cases, arborist certification was not mandatory, and if it was, they would bear the cost of that. The type of work licensed, I'm ranging between simple and complex. On the simple end, no license was required of tree or branch was two inches or less in diameter at the point of cut. In other cases, they license all work on all sizes of trees and tree parts. In some cases, they license only, or had a separate license perhaps for ornamental trees from ground position only. In other instances, they license all forms of work, including climbing and aerial. It ranged from no licensing to some or multiple types of licenses for chemical treatment. But in the state of Iowa, the state of Des Moines, 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 But in the state of Iowa, the state itself licenses chemical applicators, for there's no reason for the city of Des Moines to do so. Qualifications to get this license range between simple and complex. In one instance, it was voluntary or required. Some had no arbor certification requirement, and others did, at the owner or the worker level. And then finally, the enforcement component, I range between minimum and maximum. Some communities, after they got a license, there was no inspection or investigation after the fact for any reason. In others, they investigated at least for proof of the license. In some, they did not investigate arboretural standards, in other words, quality of work. In some, they did. Some had no fines, others had graduated fines up to $999 and penalties, including suspension and replication of license. And yet, others did not wait for the public to call in with complaints, they did proactive investigation and inspection. So we wanted to know what it would look like if we did a full enforcement ordinance in the city. It would mean, first of all, we'll go out to ensure whether they do or do not have a license. We would go beyond that and make an assessment of the type of work they're doing. Do they fully understand the biology of trees and how insects and diseases are transferred and increased? And those unacceptable practices we find would always be subject to verbal notice and education, but may also be subject to penalties for violation of American National Standards Institute, arboretural industry standards. So this is just a little model I put together. We can't make too much of it. It's like the previous budget discussion. You don't know what you got till you get there. But we thought amongst the variables, we know that we have approximately 100 companies registered in the Yellow Pages, so 50 of those became licensed at $300 annually. We would take in revenue of $15,000. That would bear an expense of $6,000 to receive and process those applications. If we had an average of 20 full-blown investigations throughout the year, that would cost us $12,000. We might, during that process, collect some more revenue in fines. So the model is revenue-neutral, but it's only an estimate. The actual number of companies registering could be smaller, and the actual costs could be higher. Penalty structure, first through third violations of $250 to $750 in administrative penalties plus actual costs. And then beyond that, we could also have the benefit of civil municipal infractions and criminal, simple misdemeanors. So based upon, excuse me, based upon our view of the various ordinance in those other municipalities, also based upon our consideration for limited personnel to process applications, potential requests for exemptions, and unquantified expenses associated with enforcement, we present the following options. Option number one is a full enforcement ordinance, where we would write a tree contractor license that number one sets forth qualifications, would require at least one certified arborist on every work site, sets forth fees, sets forth penalties, commits the city to a full enforcement ordinance. And again, full enforcement means we will ensure not only licensing but quality of work. Any contractor with four higher tree services would be licensed in this model. So this is option number one, a full enforcement ordinance. The second option looks--
David, could you go back, excuse me, to option number one? How would that, what would be the requirement for the utility companies? Would that include or exclude them?
With this model, it would include them. And so there was a previous slide where I pointed out that we might need to look at potential requests for exemptions. All right, so the option number two looks a whole lot like option number one, with this exception, we'd investigate only whether they did or did not have a license. We would not be investigating the quality of work. So these first two are ordinances. The third option is a non-ordinance option. Execute a two-pronged education campaign. Number one, to inform consumers about the need to hire only certified arborists, ask to see proof of insurance, check references, and be aware of tree issues. And the other prong would be to inform tree contractors about the benefits of arborist certification, provide ongoing education, and encourage up-to-date arboretural knowledge.
David, how many certified arborists are actually in, do we have in the state of Iowa or even in the city of Des Moines?
It's an easy process to find out. We just get on the ISA, the International Society of Arboret Culture website, and punch in who the certified arborists and where they're at. The tricky part is finding out who's available for work. I think in the typical tree contractor workforce, we don't have a lot. We probably have between five and 20, even though there are 100 companies out there that could have multiple arborists on staff, they don't. Within the region, we probably have 50 or 60, but a lot of them are tied up at non-arboretural activities like myself, people who work in the administration, say, of Mid-American Utilities, people who work at extension services and DNR. These people are also certified, but you wouldn't find them in the Yellow Pages offering tree services.
So would there be, based upon some of the proposals, would there, it sounds like there would be a real issue just meeting that requirement?
Right, getting people up to speed. Now, let me say this about the certification process. In my own case, I got the study manual and was prepared to write the exam in a matter of three months. If and when we have an ordinance come through, we'll have a 12-month phase-in period, and 12 months ought to be sufficient time for all those who want to be licensed in the city to make sure they have arbor certifications in place. Number four, this option would be to take no action at this time, or at least defer future consideration until resources are available to engage in one of the other three options. So last slide here, laid out the four options for you. Full enforcement to the left. The next is some enforcement of license-only. Educate the consumers is the number-three option, and then no action or deferred action is number four. So as you watch the colored arrows on this option, or this group of options, the trees and concerned citizens are hoping for one of the enforcement models on the left. All of us are sympathetic, of course, to the budget realities that currently confront us, and we know that fiscal prudence needs to be part of the solution. So we look to council for direction before moving forward.
David, can you go back to that last slide? Could you, I know you did an income and expense, tried to do an analysis, and there are a lot of variables and unknowns. But if I were to look at option one, two, three, and four, obviously, four would not cost anything, but it seems like there's more cost, and are you looking at adding staff, or is this something that would be done with existing staff? And if you could just talk about that in each of the first three options?
The number-one option, the full enforcement option, would have the largest cost in-house. So we're looking at part-time staff in the permit and development center to receive and process applications. And the model we're looking at so far is to simply hire a consulting arborist to do the investigations for us. So we're trying to make it as much of a revenue-neutral project as we can. The second option obviously would bear less cost because we're simply arriving on-site to make sure that they've got a license if someone calls in a complaint. Both models at this point were considering to be only consumer-driven models. If someone calls to complain, that's when we'll arrive to check something out. We're not doing proactive investigation. The third option, to educate consumers, we could pick a number and get together with media-type folks to decide how to do mailers, fly-outs, media presentations that would target both the public, the tree consumer, and also the tree company. But it would be a low-cost option.
David, I've got a question, and this may be one you're not comfortable answering at this moment, but I guess it kind of begs the question, are all your tree guys certified?
We have three certified arborists on staff outside of myself, and we typically run three crews per day, so we would be able to meet the requirement today to have a certified arborist on each work site.
All right, glad to hear that.
Beyond that, I would love to see as many as 70 to 100% of our workers certified, and that's a goal we'll work towards, just for the betterment of our own troops.
Absolutely. Okay. Any other questions?
I got a--
Go ahead.
--quick questions. I appreciate your last slide and the recognition that we have budget considerations. I guess I'd be interested in any data or information, not just about the budget implications for the city, which we have to worry about, but is there any data from communities that have established this on what the increased cost is for the consumer, the homeowner that wants to do a $500 project at home? And how much cost are we thrusting on, you know, through a fee or a mandated charge to consumers, our homeowners, our residents? What does this, my guess is if somebody's going to study it for three months for a test and pass it, and they're in demand, right now, we can only have 20 crews at work, let's take your high number.
Yes.
There can only be 20 trees right now being trimmed in the city of Des Moines at one time because you'd have to have an arborist. If I was one of them, I'd be charging a lot for my time. A lot. Because, and so I want to be careful that we establish it, you know, whatever direction we go, that there, you know, the supply and the demand is there among the licensed people so that we aren't going to triple or quadruple the cost.
Great two-point question there. The first is, do we have any data? We do not. I haven't seen any data from other municipalities whether costs actually increased or not. My own feeling on this subject is that costs would increase only minimally. The cost of preparation and writing the exam for the arbor certification, which is kind of the key component we're talking about here. We want to have knowledgeable people on a work site. The cost for that component is relatively small, $265. And tree companies can certainly well afford to get one or multiple licensed or certified people on staff. Other costs to be borne by them would be insurances and workers' comp, typically which ought to be in place anyway and may not be, and so we're just trying to ensure that. So to get to the bottom of your question, will costs go up, I think only minimally?
I'd like to add to that, that we do have some, what I would consider professional tree services in attendance today, and they're already figuring their timeout per hour. That's not going to change if they're a professional tree service. It's the unscrupulous tree services that try and take advantage of this, and those are the ones most likely that won't be licensed anyway. And I'd like to add one other thing, that sales tax is a huge issue, too. We know that there's tree services out there charging sales tax, but they don't have a sales tax permit. You know where that money's going. And I think there's a real advantage to licensing these tree services. We've got some real issues coming, especially in our oak forests with oak wilt and bur oak blight, or you're going to be hearing about Bob. And yet, we see tree services out pruning oaks in the middle of summer, which they absolutely should not be doing. This is one way to control it. And this is a cost to the residents of our city spreading these diseases. It's kind of a hidden cost, but I'll guarantee it's in the millions of dollars every year. And with Emerald Ash Borer coming, I think there's a real advantage to this sometime in the future. I agree with Rick. I don't know if now's the time to do it or not, but I really think we need to take a look at this just for the good of our community.
I do have one other question. It might be best to direct to Jeff, and I know it's not going to be something you can answer today, but the state requires a contractor registration. It's not a competency license, but it is a registration. And if there could be, let's take option two here, if there could be some kind of enforcement, a penalty established by the city if you violate a city ordinance, could we have a penalty if you violated the state ordinance or the state law, which requires the contractor? That might be a lower-cost way for the city to at least provide some minimum expectations and have some enforcement. So my, you know, one of, I don't even know if it's legal or if it would be possible, but it might be something that would slide in between option two and three here. And one of the reasons why I think that that has some legitimacy is that in times where our citizens around the state in particular, Des Moines hasn't suffered quite as bad in the last five years as northeast Iowa has in storms and wind and so forth, but you see a lot of out-of-state, unscrupulous contractors that come in. And one of the nice things about the state registration is it requires a financial bond to do business, and you have to have it registered and provided to the state. I can see a lower-cost way where we would establish some penalty if somebody did work in the city without a state contractor registration. And if they were out-of-state contractors trying to just take advantage of, you know, consumers, and then they're on the run as soon as a storm is over, or the cleanup of the storm is over, it might be a way to provide a low-cost, minimum threshold to address the situation as we sort out how we get to a budget situation that would allow for something different. Because I tend to agree with Skip and Rick, you know, this may not be the right time to take on a whole bunch of cost, because if we do it, we should do it right. But there might be something out there that wouldn't be establishing any new threshold that any contractor has to abide by. It's already the law that they do it. But I know through my work that there are thousands of contractors that do not abide by that requirement, and we would get to some of them this way.
Mr. Mayor, I had a quick question, too, if I could. I understand kind of the licensing component and the competency of the contractors that consumers are hiring, but I'm not sure I heard kind of an enforcement mechanism. The fact that they're certified arborists, how do you prevent pruning in the summer when it's not supposed to happen? Are we talking about creating an ordinance where we lay out exactly what contractors can and can't do, and when they can do it, and things like that?
Good question. Not as part of this ordinance, but I believe a robust tree ordinance ought to include some of the principles of what can and cannot be done at correct times of year. And so that will be for a future ordinance document.
Okay.
Would that in part be in option one?
Well, if we were on a full enforcement option, full enforcement ordinance, then we will be out checking those very things without having them written down in yet a different ordinance.
But at this point, even going with option one, there wouldn't really be any teeth once people are certified, and not to discredit the industry or otherwise, but once you're certified, you can still do whatever you want. You can still top a tree, for example.
Right. Well, that brings us to the point, too, that we're really only asking for a baseline competency. There are other structures or other levels in the structure of certification beyond certified arborists. We're only asking for a baseline competency. And you're speaking to the fact that someone might achieve, have a good day on a test, make the grade, and become a certified arborist, but not really follow the principles that are part of that certification. And that's what we would attempt to find out through the full enforcement option, is that we would be out there looking at their work, not only to see if they're licensed, but also to see if they're doing proper arboretural care.
So the plan is to go quite a bit more in-depth as far as contractors, what they can and can't do--
Yes.
--moving forward beyond--
Right. And even with the full, there's kind of a melding of options here. Even with the full enforcement option, I think it behooves the city to have some education ongoing to the current crop of licensed tree contractors, but to every tree contractor in the region, making sure that they're up to date on arboretural principles.
Hallie, was part of your question, David, that let's assume under option one that you discovered somebody working without a license, what would, is there an enforcement-- What would, is there an enforcement? What's a penalty?
Right. We had the first, second, and third administrative penalties, and beyond that municipal infraction, et cetera. So, we would enforce using those mechanisms.
So, there's a fine?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure, Hallie, you understood?
But just for not being certified, not for the actual?
Right. Not for the work.
No, we, the full enforcement option, we would include that category of infraction as well. They could have a license and be doing entirely the wrong thing, and we would weigh in on that at that time. And if it's a really egregious act that might be spreading a disease through the whole neighborhood, we might jump to the third level or even to a civil infraction, because the crime is so egregious to trees.
All right. Are there any other questions?
Can I, I'd just like to, you know, your comment, David, was, what are next steps and where do we go from here before you spend a lot of time? And I guess just from my perspective, I don't see option four as an option. I mean, I think that we need to be, at a minimum, looking at education and working with the citizens and the contractors, but I'm still having a hard time getting my arms around, you know, the amount of people that we're talking about, option three, well, option two and one. And I guess what I'd like to see is a plan as to how could we get to option one, understanding the budget restrictions we have right now? What would be a realistic, step-by-step process so that each year we could maybe move to that ultimate goal? You know, it may not be the next two years, but we're looking three years out. This is where we want to be, and these are the steps that we see taking to get us there.
Right.
And that's what I would like to see. I understand the value of trees and what they bring to the community, but we also have to be sensitive to what our constraints are right now.
Well, I agree that even the third option is better than doing nothing or deferring at this time. But having said that, I think education ought to be ongoing with the other two options as well. If we were to pick option three today, you know, we'd probably have to get some budget in place. I'll just pick a number out of the air, $20,000 annually for the next three years in order to get some kind of momentum going with media and flyers, mailouts, tuck something in the utility bill, something of that nature.
So, are you telling me, then, that it'd be $20,000 a year for the education component? Would you have that in your budget? Would you be able to work that into your budget?
To that, I'd have to refer to my budget people.
Well, but I mean, you've got, you've got control to make a recommendation.
Right.
Okay.
He would, his recommendation would go through bill and then ultimately to this table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank, I'd like to make a statement. We've got several people here that worked on the Citizens Committee. CJ was going to try and be here. I've talked to her at length over the weekend about this, but I want you to take it back to your committee members that you're not being ignored. This just might be put on hold for a little while. It will be resurrected again, hopefully sometime next summer, early next fall. Your work didn't go for naught, and I, some of, Ralph, you live in Des Moines, so you understand what our budget problems are at this time. I think you'd agree that maybe we shouldn't move forward and put this in place yet, but David will keep in contact with all of you, and we'll keep this on a back burner, and it will be resurrected at a later date, no later than a year from now. Does that work?
Can I speak?
Sure.
Do I need to blow up my demo myself? My name's Ralph Connor. I live at 1612 York Street in Des Moines. I have had the advantage of working on this committee, and we've been doing this for some time now, months and really years, some of us, on different parts of this ordinance or the tree issues. The only thing I would ask, and we're certainly all sympathetic, there's no, I mean, I would, if I was sitting in your chairs, my hair would be even grayer than it is now, and I know that. It's not going to be an easy thing to do, but I would sincerely hope you don't kick this can too far down the road. A year, I would sure hate to see that. Three or six months, I'd be more comfortable, but I also understand the decisions you're making, and we don't always have control of what's going on. But it's time to really look at this stuff. We're, you know, these things aren't anything that a reasonable, normal contractor wouldn't do anyway, with the exception of the certification. And even the certification, now, to be a certified arborist, you have to sign and agree to an ethics pledge that you could lose that certification if you're not doing a good job. Now, honestly, how much ISA wants to get in to play in the role of policeman, I don't know, but that is there. So, there are some things in place that could kind of help us out in putting this together, and it's one of the advantages of the ISA certification. As far as investigating vehicles, part of that licensing thing that we recommended was making sure everybody had names, phone numbers, and business license numbers on the side of the truck. An investigation would be as simple as driving by and seeing if that was there, and is it current? That could be that simple. It doesn't have to be, you know, get out of the truck and investigate. So, there's ways to work these things out. It's just a matter of where do we want to go, and we certainly understand, and I think, I'm not speaking, I'm speaking for myself, and I think I'm speaking for the committee. We understand. But please, let's don't delay this too long, because there are things coming at us, and if those things get here before we have these ordinances in place, I think I mentioned this before up here, I was working when Dutch elm disease came through, and believe me, you've got everybody in the world out there cutting trees. It's crazy. I mean, even right now, we've got one company that's been in town for at least three years, I know of, maybe four, and they don't even have Iowa license plates. The chances of them having Iowa workman's comp and stuff? I don't know. You know, I'm not prepared to say they don't, but it would seem that that's probably an issue. So, you know, there are some things that we can do, and that helps to protect the companies that are here in town actually doing work and trying to do the right thing and that sort of thing. And that works two ways. So, forgive me, I'll get back off my soapbox now. Any questions?
Thanks, Ralph. Any other comments, councilmembers? All right. David, I think that if you heard sort of a message, we'd like to have slightly more definitive cost lines so that we knew kind of what it would take to do three, two, or one, and what the timeframes would be. Part of it, to me, seems to be, you know, if they were licensed, whether it was complaint-driven or your staff was out and crews were out and ran across some people kind of doing the wrong things, you might ask those questions. And it would not, in all intents and purposes, necessarily be as expensive as we might be envisioning it, just to do some of these minimal things. Obviously, if we were out looking at every single project that ever came down the road and did it not complaint-driven, but actually that they potentially had to sign up for every tree that they were going to, and give us notice, that'd be a different kind of a situation. But maybe if you could get back to us and give us some sort of a feel what those costs would be, and then we could more intelligently make a decision in a proper timeframe and keep the discussion open with the manager and his budget situation. So, thank you for the presentation. Let's open it up. Are there any folks in the audience who would like to make public comment on anything? Come ahead.
Mayor, Councilman, Andrew Clark. My name's Neil Johnson. I'm a general manager in Operations Group for Mid-American Energy Company. I work out of the control center in Urbandale. I wanted just first, I want to make some comments. I think it came up earlier about the impact on utility companies, just on the tree care or tree licensing proposal. First of all, we're supportive that, you know, that there's proper licensing of contractors, that there are contractors out there that are insured, bonded, and competent to do the trimming, both for the protection of the citizens of Des Moines as well as, you know, the health care of the urban forests that we have here. We did have some participation on the committee early on, and we're working with the committee. We're very supportive, you know, for the four higher trimming, but the proposal as it stands, especially with objective one and, or option one and option two, is going to cause us some real operational problems in our ability to respond to storms and just our ability to do day-to-day trimming operations. And the primary reason is that across the utility industry, that is not a standard practice to have a certified arborist on every crew. So, I'll tell you a little bit about, as you know, our primary responsibility as it relates to trees is to make sure they're clear of the electric lines so we have, we provide reliable service, and also that we protect the health of the trees and the community. We take that very seriously. We do have a best management practices program that has been recognized by the Tree Line USA, by the Arbor Day Foundation for the last ten years. That award requires some, meeting some very stringent requirements on the tree pruning practices we talked about today, as well as quality control, and we're very proud of that. We do, we do use ISA, our certified arborist. Our contractor is Asplun, nationally-known contractor, actually internationally-known contractor that does the tree trimming and line clearance work. The general foreman that they have here in Des Moines are all ISA-certified, as well as the foresters that Mid-American has in Des Moines are ISA-certified. Having said that, the foremen themselves are not ISA-certified, but all the foremen, as well as the tree trimming personnel out there doing the day-to-day work, all have to go through a pretty extensive, a very extensive, three-year apprenticeship program. So, we feel that, you know, we have the proper systems in place and the proper personnel in place to provide very good service. The real operational issue causes us, if in a storm, since this is not an industry-accepted practice, if we have to bring other crews in, we will not be able to do that because they will not be able to meet this requirement. I'm a member of the Midwest Mutual Assistance Group, as well as I communicate with mutual assistance groups across the country, and I do not know of other major utilities that would face the same thing. So, if we had a large ice storm, which we've had in Des Moines, we'd have very much difficulty of getting other resources in that would meet that requirement, and that would greatly impede our ability to restore service. And even on a day-to-day basis, we somewhat routinely can move crews amongst our different territories in the state of Iowa. The other communities that showed up there that we serve have exempted us from that requirement. So, if Des Moines were to be the only one that had that requirement, we could not move crews in even internally and meet those standards. So, it really, again, support the concept of protecting the public and maintaining the health of the urban forest, certainly with that, but this would be, option one and two would really provide some, I think, some unworkable solutions or challenges, basically, for Mid-American.
Would you say especially during emergency situations?
It would be, especially during emergencies, but day-to-day, we routinely move crews around, depending on trim cycles.
But you were focusing on bringing emergency crews in that wouldn't meet that. It sounded to me like your crews...
Well, the other crews within Iowa, other than Des Moines, would not meet those requirements, would not need to meet those requirements also. I mean, we have crews in Council Bluffs, Sioux City, Waterloo, Iowa City, that we can move around, and even during emergency response, they wouldn't, but even day-to-day, we have different workloads. We'll move people from area to area to cover them.
Are these your, your people you're talking about?
No, these are our contractor, Asplun.
Okay. So, you're saying that the contractors that you're hiring may not be qualified?
No, I'm saying they don't hold the ISA certification for every crew.
Okay.
They have ISA-certified people, it's just not on every crew. The general foreman I was alluding to today oversee the crews, as well as the MEC foresters. They are ISA-certified. They're in the field every day, watching what the crews do, but it's the actual crew that would not have a certified arborist on each crew.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Neil, are you aware of the testimony offered to the State Supreme Court on our franchise fees by Keith Majors about the value of the damage done by Mid-American Energy to our urban forest?
No, somebody asked me that last week, and I, that's been a few years ago. I have not seen that testimony. I was aware, I mean, I remember the issue, but I have not seen the testimony or any report.
Well, the testimony was offered in 2006, and Keith's estimated damage, annual loss of $5.2 million. So, you're suggesting that a company that's doing that kind of damage to urban forest, we shouldn't oversee what you're doing?
As I said, I haven't seen the study. I would really have to take a look at the study, I think, to make a conclusion on that. We trim to the ANCA 300 standards. The people are trained. They go through extensive training, have continued education, but no, I have not seen that study.
All right. Any other questions? Dave, I think he's making a good statement in put the utilities underground.
That was what I was thinking, too. Deal with that problem.
That's been on the national news in the last week from the East Coast. They're very upset out there.
All right. Anything else? We have another citizen.
I'm, excuse me, Nadine, Nadine Hogate with the NRB, and I want to visit with you just a minute about the block grant proposals that you have before you. You know, the NRB is charged with housing and revitalization, and I want to talk to you about the proposal we have for putting more money into the demolition and a bit about the half a million that you're not going to provide for emergency care. What I'm going to say, it has no reflection on the housing that's been done in the city of Des Moines in the last 21 years. The housing developers and the nonprofits have done an awesome job. They have provided housing for the very low income, all the way up to the select and almost penthouse kind of housing. You can't go anywhere in the city without seeing beautiful housing that's been provided. However, the message that we get and have got from our neighborhoods when they submitted proposals for designation and from the proposal that we got through the block grant from River Bend to deal with housing points to a problem that's there and going to be there. It's the heartbreaking problem for those of us who live in the core city and work in neighborhoods. We aren't able to touch the basic fundamental cause for slum and blight, and that's our abandoned and derelict houses. They're there, we can't do a thing about it. Until we are able to make a, some kind of an impression or some kind of correction for all the continued problem that we have, we're going to, that problem is going to be with us, and the work that we do is going to have minimal effect. The assessors can charge, assess taxes, but we all know that that revenue is not there. That makes a significant impression on our, on the revenue that we get from these houses. That problem's not going to, we're going to go away. We're going to continue to be at you about those kinds of housing. Maybe, as Ms. Hensley suggested, that Polk County Housing Trust, maybe we can go to NFC again. Maybe our housing developers would be willing to talk with us and see if there isn't something we can do about all the abandoned and derelict houses and the negative effect that has on the city's total revitalization, revitalization, excuse me, particularly in the core part of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Good morning, Mayor, County, members of City Council, and City Manager, Mr. Clark. Christine Pardee, and I'm here representing the Wayland Park Neighborhood Association. I'll be really brief in my comments, but I have three areas that I just wanted to comment on. In regard to the Polk County Housing Trust Fund, I serve on that board of directors, and I'm actually just asked or just text our executive director, Eric Bermaneister, to check and see if those are, if we have funds with a housing trust fund that we could use for that. And so perhaps that is something that could be helpful. In regard to the forums that were put on in the city, I want to thank you for those. I attended all three of those. I thought they were excellent. The city put out plenty of information in advance through media, lots of information got pushed, pushed out to the neighborhood associations, and I thought it was a really great opportunity to, to both learn, but also to develop a little bit more empathy for the very difficult job that you all have to do. So, again, thank you for doing that, and we look forward to having more opportunities to provide citizen input in that way. The last thing I wanted to comment on was the proposed ordinance for the tree licensing. And just to follow up on the gentleman from Mid-American Energy, the contractor that they work with, and I can, you know, attest to this from what we see, at least in, only in Wayland Park Neighborhood, we've got trees, just within the past few months, that have been completely lopped off, 50% of the tree, just on one side of the tree completely gone. I don't think that's appropriate pruning. I don't think, I mean, we've got a number of instances of that. It's completely impossible for any business to provide that kind of regulatory oversight over all of their contractors. It's just, it's not possible. And so whatever kind of middle ground we can, we can reach, whatever kind of mechanism we can identify to help provide that kind of oversight over some of these crews that go out, it's really, really important. I know that this is a very awkward time for, for passing this ordinance, and I understand it's going to be, you know, it's going to be put off and maybe phased in over a period of time. But again, if there's any, you know, any ways that you can kind of utilize the collective energies and the eyes of your neighborhood association members all around the city, you know, maybe to help this way too, we're the ones that see firsthand who's coming down the street and who's just, you know, chopping the trees right in half in some instances. So, thank you for at least considering the phase-in of this ordinance.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We'd ask if there are other speakers that are planning to speak, and we have one coming here now, if we could get everybody kind of over here so we have sort of an idea what we're gonna, how many more we're gonna have? Go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Holly Cragor. I'm a citizen, been working on the committee over a period of time. And just a couple of points. I just want to say that, you know, when you look at those smaller communities who do have a tree ordinance, it makes me think, geez, you know, Des Moines needs to be a leader here, not a follower. And I just implore you to do something, you know, for, for this. The other thing I want to point out is Chris Coleman mentioned, you know, the cost to the homeowner. This is just a personal example, but my mother has a very large old buckeye tree on her property, and this fall she had three people come to her door because the tree is old and just the nature of buckeyes, it loses its leaves by the, you know, the end of August. And they said to her, your, your tree is dead, you need to cut it down. And my mom said, no, it's not dead. You know, she's a strong person and knows about her trees, and she just said, no, it's not dead. This is the way my tree is, and I'm, I'm not going to cut it down till I have to. So, and then in thinking about that, in the south of Grand and Waterbury neighborhoods, we have a lot of oak trees that have lost their leaves, leaves early because of disease. And I just wonder how many of those trees were cut down this fall, which I saw many, many crews out there, cutting down the oak trees, and they were really diseased and not necessarily dead. The tree companies, did they ask them, is the tree, you know, did you test it? Is it really dead or is it just diseased? So, I just want to make those, those few points. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? I want to thank you all for attending this morning, and for those of you so inclined, we'll be back here this evening. Thanks for coming.